All right. It is 7:45, so I think that we are ready to begin the public hearing of the density determination for proposed two-lot flexible subdivision at 255 Merriam Street. And just before we get rolling, maybe just a few words to fill people in on how this works. We're going to take a look at a theoretical plan which proves, which is going to purport to prove that the applicant can put a certain number of lots on the site geometrically, and then, once that proved plan is established, then we move on to the flexible plan, which is what they're really proposing to do. So reactions to the first plan should quickly be technical because we're not talking about the real world here. It's a geometric exercise. Just wanted to make that clear. So we'll start with the density determination hearing first, and then immediately after that, move on to the public hearing on the flexible proposal. Is everybody clear on how that works? All right. Before we start, I'd just like for us to introduce ourselves for anybody who doesn't know who we are. I'm Hal Ailock, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and my other board members are...
Susan Marais.
David Mendelssohn.
Louis Chalobasch.
Steve Oppenheimer.
All right. We've given this about, the density determination presentation, about 15 minutes, and then 45 minutes for the flexible subdivision plan. So having said all that, who's making the presentation for the applicant?
Jonathan White, attorney for the applicant. I'll make a very brief introduction, and then most of the presentation will be done by Jay LaVoy of Gilson. And also with us are the applicant, Hal Myers and Jane Bybee, and Karen Sebastian, the landscape designer. Very briefly, the lot is on Merriam Street, right here, and I have some, I'll hand out a couple of maps online from Weston GIS, also helping underscore which is the lot in question. This is in, this area of Weston, it's zoned as single-family District C, which, in this entire area of the C, which means the requirement is 30,000 square foot lots. And I asked Jay to expand the tax assessor, the map, this is what the tax assessor used and for other purposes, to more than usual, to, for one purpose, to show that this is pretty much, this neighborhood is almost totally built out. This is pretty much the biggest lot left. There's one other good-sized lot off of Willard, but that's about it. This is about the only lot left that has enough for another lot on it, and...
Excuse me, could you stand to the side?
Yeah, I'm a little tight here. Let's see if we can do that. Here's the lot right here. The point I'm making is, this is a section of Weston that's quite built out, and this is kind of the last remaining lot. You can see it's happened in other areas in this neighborhood where you have front-to-back lots, and lot land becomes more valuable, and that's what happens. So this is where the subject of the proposal is. And one thing, I think it's helpful that Mr. Ailock talked about, you know, what this first hearing is about, which is the density determination plan, because someone, I assume it's a neighbor, and I'll show the board what went in all the mailboxes, was, in most ways, it was a good notice. It was asking people to come tonight, and we're very happy that people came tonight. In fact, I think seven people have written letters of support already, and a lot of those folks are in the audience. But the thing that was confusing, I'm sure to many people, was not the front, but it's the back of the notice, which shows the density determination plan. The thing we wanted to, you'll hear over and over, and that's the first 15 minutes, that is not the plan that's proposed. That is, we have to go through that exercise to get to the next plan, which is, we are proposing, which allows these folks to save the front house. So without any more, I'll let Jane take over.
Could I have a copy for the registry?
Yes. And hello, what's your call?
Susan, can you get a copy?
Yes. There you go. And there's nothing misleading. It's asking people to come out, because you're interested in the neighborhood. I've got one left. There you go.
So as Jonathan had mentioned, this is the plan that's shown on the back of that letter. It's actually the density determination plan, so it's basically, in essence, what Alan mentioned, the proof plan, to kind of go through the regular rule of a normal subdivision, whether or not we can actually put a two-lot subdivision before we decide to put in the actual flexible subdivision. So on this lot, basically, we have the 90,000 square foot lot, basically, that's comprised of the existing lot itself. We have a small cul-de-sac with basically a 70-foot radius, which complies with the town, small throat for the actual roadway, our filler radiuses all comply with everything. We have, each lot has just over 200 feet of frontage, so we, we're over 25 feet more than what the minimum requirements for the frontage are. Each of these lots conform to the lot irregularity calculations. They all have the quadrangle with the buildings and the septic systems inside them. We show basically five-bedroom septic systems and basically a 2,600 square foot footprint there, and a 2,000, almost a 2,900 square foot footprint there, for basically, kind of the concept of what's going on. Only 3% slope going across the front, so there's no, so that means it's all compliant to the normal subdivision regulations. We have no site distance issues.
Can you step just to the side a little bit?
Oh, sure, sorry. So we have no site distance issues. Basically, it's zoned for 20 miles an hour, but we designed for 25 miles an hour, we could easily make that, hit that criteria. We have this offset, to centerline offset, to the Hallid Hill Road, to the proposed roadway. So basically, it's a fully conforming density determination plan.
No waivers?
No waivers.
What is the offset of Hallid Hill?
So this is 360 feet, and that's about where the center line is.
The range, I think, 250?
250, yeah.
You're saying no waivers because...
Well, other than it's a Denon Road.
Yeah, it's a Denon Road. Right. Okay. Okay. Do you, so what did you say the frontage was on each lot?
So each lot has just over 200 feet. So it's 202 on Lot A, and 200, just under 210 on Lot B. And that doesn't include the fill-in here, which usually you can only use half the fill-in when we're doing that portion of the radius. So yeah, so it's, normally, C is 175, and then we can do the reduced frontage down to 150 if we were doing a real density determination, but this is actually set up to be a conforming frontage system.
Can't you do that? I'm probably have to run down to 125.
125, correct, I'm sorry.
Are you talking along this line?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So basically, halfway up this radius, all the way up to there, it's up to being a 209, and then this is, I'm sorry, that becomes a 202, and this is about 209, in the middle part. And then we have the quadrangle, which has the required 90% of the actual minimum lot areas, and so the quadrangle, you can kind of see it in dash, it kind of comes up all along that edge, and that contains a building in the actual septic as required by the quadrangle definition. And then same thing over here.
Could you review the setbacks again?
Sure. So we have 25 feet for the side yards, so in railyards. This is a 40 feet off the sideline, or 65 feet to the centerline. And so we have basically 25, 25, 25, and then 40.
What is going on over front property line? Where is the road pavement, the existing pavement?
The existing pavement is right here. So it basically, it's a public driver width, and it enters in and out, but it comes along here, and that's where we're tying in the pavement to ours, but that's where the pavement ran along that edge.
How many feet is that, property line to property line, your existing pavement?
The existing pavement?
And what's the frontage? What's the existing frontage without this? I mean, I'm trying to get my head around this. So what you're saying is that you're creating existing frontage?
Oh, yes. The cul-de-sac that is being used to create the frontage for two lots. So what we have is about 212 feet of frontage along the existing project site.
Right now? And then you're making a new road?
Yeah, we're basically making 400 feet of frontage.
We're going to make 400 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And you're saying that you did this to demonstrate that you could get the zoning bylaw required frontage...
Without any waivers.
Without taking the deduction for the flexible...
Right, for the density determination, yeah. And then we want to show the quadrangle, and work that kind of stuff. So it's, we figure that it's, the only way we want to show is basically the Denon Road, and so it's easier to discuss when you go to the flexible, what's going on.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, I'm looking for, ah, there he is, way in the back, our engineering consultant. Dave, this is Dave Conway, our engineering consultant. Dave, I assume you've had a chance to look this over?
Yeah, we looked at the, basically, geometry of this, and it does comply with the zoning bylaw, and what, you know, what Jay says is true, meets the geometric requirements for a couple, two lots in this area.
Okay.
No commenting on the quality of the lots, just the...
No, no, well, yeah. Okay. Good. In that case, any other questions from the planning board? Any comments from our platter at this stage? No. In that case, are there any comments from anyone in the audience? Any questions on this? No? Well, I'm going to take a little bit of a liberty here, and it's a little bit before 8 o'clock, but I think everyone's here that's going to be here, so why don't we just transition into the flexible subdivision, flexible plan?
So I'll just throw this up real quick, if we have a little bit of time to... Yeah. Existing additions.
Is it going to be helpful?
For the audience, if you put it in the corner, and then you close.
Yeah.
The board can't see it. They won't see it.
That's a good try, though. And if you show it on the other side, yeah, on the other side, Jay.
So this is just the existing additions, so we can kind of just walk through that quick, before we get into the actual flexible layout. So as you mentioned, Susan, the actual total frontage is 270 feet, right across the front. So we have existing house, basically historic house, we have the existing barn, basically a punk shed there. Clients had bought the property in 2001, there was a septic system that was installed in 2001, it's a four-bedroom septic system. Soils on the property are fantastic, with the exception of as we push up the hill a little bit, the till materials start getting into it, but it's all underlaid with the same materials. We have gravel driveway for the entire, for the project site. We have some great vegetation in the back through there. It's designated with this green line is the lawn line. We have a small field stone wall in the front with some vegetation as well. Basically, it's a public driver width. The lot itself was created when a lot of the actual portions of lots around it got subdivided off. From 1955 and 1957, there were land court subdivisions put together for Hallid Hill. 1963, the butters on the right were basically subdivided off. The two remaining lots were these two lots. And then they ended up having, this lot ended up working out with basically what was a leftover lot. It ends up becoming whatever's left over after all the subdivisions are created, so that's how this works out. So even though some of the record distances are what they are, they get shorted out sometimes. As an example, the record distance back here is 192, the true distance is 18983, and that's based on, because of the land court subdivision that was done, the toxic bottom monument for that back property line. We put that together, basically surveyed all the individual properties, including all the land court, and kind of just pieced everything together to create the lot itself.
Is there any dispute about the lot lines?
No, because we gave it, basically, everybody gets their stuff, and then after that, we build theirs out for what their record is, then that's what we have left over, so...
Where it was land court, we treated land court as trunks all, so that's what was left.
Yeah. It's actually the Malone rear property line is what trumped us over here, because they were 63, because we're junior rights to them, so they actually trumped us by four, by almost four feet. And that, basically, what happens is her lot corner starts at a land court corner for the subdivision, that's why we do that length, so that it has to hold.
The green line...
Yep, the lawn line, yep.
Is that, that's the edge of the wooded area of the lot currently? Is that what it is?
Basically, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And how does the topography run in the back of the lot?
So you have about 170, elevation 178 in the back, up on this back right corner, which runs down to 159 over here, so you're looking at about a 20-foot gradient. So the original submission, which was actually what was shown on the, at the actual sidewalk, is this layout. So as you had noticed from the actual density determination plan, we had a side-by-side layout. Basically, what we wanted to do is basically our front-to-back layout, utilizing the area in the back that's undeveloped right now for a future lot. We have a show...
And the front-to-back enables you to save the front house?
Correct, yep. So we're showing the front lot to be the existing house, existing septic, as I mentioned, the barn, driveway, gravel driveway, all basically going to be maintained as is. We're proposing, basically, this right now is shown as a 14-foot wide driveway, but we'd like to do a 12-foot, depending on how it works out with the fire chief. Basically, we're entering in and out of the property, kind of trying to save some of the existing vegetation, you can see it through this section here and this section here, and then basically, we're trying to not have a straight shot all the way through to the rear lot. So after we come up through here, we have five-bedroom septic systems, here's the primary area and the reserve area. The primary area can be installed without any grade change. So basically, that's where I mentioned before, with these, all the sand materials down through this area, no groundwater, so there's no issue for the septic system. Shown in red is basically the limit of work, and right now, we're showing a development area for potential house area, house development for that area. With this grade change, there's probably going to be some kind of, you know, iteration where depending on how you want to lay it out, you're looking at retaining walls on one side, but then grading down to the other, or putting a wall on this side and grading, keeping that grade the same because of that, because basically, you have about a 12-foot grade change inside the house development box area.
Why did you make the box so large?
It was basically trying to figure out, when we started looking at a house placement, everybody started talking about this, like basically right in the center of this.
Who was everybody?
Oh, we had some builders, some architects look at it, even when we had men on site with Kim, Joe, and Dave, everybody's focusing on this section here, right in the middle, of where would be a good house location. So what I did is I took that, basically, box area, and I just brought it out a little bit, in case somebody wanted to push it to the left, push it to the right, push it forward, down. We're not settled 100% on this, but it's basically what, you know, basically, I offset it, kind of what I've done in the past, you know, basically 10 feet around and said, this might be an area, you know, we can kind of work with it.
I'm not at all clear on how to access this property.
Sure. So we have, basically, this is the proposed driveway. And so what we have is, we're trying to utilize the existing curb clip, and so basically, it comes up through the side here, it's right now, as I mentioned, it's a 14-foot wide driveway. All the utilities you can see are underneath here, except for the water meanders a little bit outside the actual footprint of the driveway, and then basically comes back to that side. So what we're trying to do is with this meander, we're trying to keep people speeding to the back, having everybody be able to look at a straight shot down through there, and basically, when it comes back towards the property line, it was under the guys that basically with the existing garage shed over here, a lot of the existing vegetation, that this would allow us to be able to pull a little bit closer to the property line without having infringement on the neighborhood there.
You mean, your driveway, your end, it would be right exactly on the property?
No, no, it's, well, it's about four feet off.
And what are the little red lines? Are those just a...
It's a limit of work.
That's a limit of work.
Okay, but then there's a smaller, lighter red line, sort of, yeah.
Yes, that's the gas. So those are utilities. So we have, yellow is electric, pink is basically gas, and then blue is more.
But you don't need retaining walls through there?
No, it's all micro, it's a lot of micro grading. So what happens is, we can see all the little blues, which is the drainage that we're proposing to make sure that we're showing decreases in peak rate runoff and volume runoff for the direct to butters and for Merriam Street. So what we're doing is, a lot of the grading is all less than a foot gradient, it's all, you're talking about six inches, eight inches.
And now the sidewalk, though, worked for changes.
Yes.
So given the time track, do you want to slide over?
Well, they haven't seen this original, so that's why I want to show this one over.
Oh, so this is your...
Yeah.
It's been marked. Sorry, sorry, Jay.
Yeah, so that was basically, so this is what was shown at the actual, at the sidewalk. Basically, we got a lot of feedback from, we also had staked out a, basically, driveway that kind of just ran 15 feet off the property line all the way back, and a lot of the neighbors, a lot of the butters had preferred that layout, basically saying that the edge of pavement wouldn't be any closer than 15 feet to the property line. So we spoke with Dave after the sidewalk, spoke to Kim a little bit, we kind of put a, tried to put a little conceptual layout together to kind of show tonight, get some feedback on it, so we can kind of talk about it. And that basically is this scenario right now. So the limit of work is the same, I haven't changed that. But we do have, you can see the significant difference in the driveway layout. So what we're proposing is, because we would like to take down the ash tree in there, so we're basically centering the driveway on the ash tree, coming along here, turning, and then we're basically holding 15 feet along this edge, and then coming back into the property. And so I had Karen take a look at, basically, putting together some, just some pocket planting areas, and just some general ideas of what we could do to mitigate screen, the actual proposed driveway, the proposed development in the back. And I can let her expand a little bit on it, but it's basically predominantly never green screening through the backside and through the sides. There's some shrubs, some deciduous, but it's predominantly, you know, eight to 10, 10 to 12 for trees.
Why is the limit of work so far removed from the building envelope? Is that because you think you're going to have to do a lot of regrading to make it work?
That's the, as of right now, because we haven't, this hasn't been fully pushed out yet for whether or not what a field function of a house is going to be there. So we wanted some room to be able to either pull this in and push, you know, basically keep this out here, pull this in for grading and that kind of stuff. So basically, this was a first guess at what we think, we believe is a possible limit of work, but we think, you know, with some working with it, we can probably tighten it up a little bit.
Okay. So this is a landscape piece to this presentation?
Oh, yeah, just this general, but I can let Karen talk about it, kind of her thoughts as she was going through it. Yep.
So on the sidewalk, I spoke with Kim, and I spoke with the neighbor here, Sarah, whose driveway is very close to this property line, and she was concerned that there was going to be a green wall of our varieties along the edge, which she knows of. So one of the things that I took into consideration was, when we pulled this driveway, and it gives us an opportunity to plant some good-sized evergreen trees, and also make some deciduous. So as I was doing sketches, I would put evergreens in this area, and then maybe some deciduous, thinking about blocking the view from this house, thinking about blocking the views from this house, from this house, you know, so I looked at all of those different houses. This area, this front area here, where the driveway swings out, Sarah was concerned because what she loves about the house is that when she's here, she can look out and see the other houses in the neighborhood. So I didn't want to put big, tall evergreens there. However, we're losing this ash tree, which is already in decline, and so I'd like to put one large deciduous tree there for scaling it to replace that, and then underneath that would be planted with shrubs, so that she can keep that viewscape that she likes. And then along here would be some evergreens, some deciduous, and then moving up into this area, I have, you know, 10 to 15 evergreen trees between here and here to buffer this house, and then I've got eight to 10 evergreen trees along in here to buffer for this house. And then filling in, there are quite a few trees up in here, but filling in in this area under planting in between, also some evergreen trees to screen from the back houses, and then along this property line as well. And then a little bit underfilling in here to give this house some screening as well. This clump here of evergreens would also help to screen from this house. So that's...
That's as far as you've gotten.
It's really conceptual, because we don't know what the house is going to be, and
so we're trying to think how many, you know, trees would go in there, and what sizes it would be, you know, all of them are going to be minimum eight to 10 to 12, and we kind of want to mix, because it's, you know, keeping with the neighborhood to have different sizes.
That's what I'm concerned about, this boxiness of the limit of work. I mean, I assume that that's not written in stone, that whole...
I'm sure that's not...
That's going to be very much more soft.
When, I'm sure when there's an actual, when we actually have a design for the house and the design for the grading to meet with that house, that that would get pulled in to the limit of grading.
It was going to get pulled in before then.
Yeah. But I mean, it wouldn't be just boxy, because it would go follow the grading.
Yeah, because I can just, I mean, when the neighbor down here was talking about the little walls, that just looks like what would happen in the actual house lot. You know, whenever you have a limit of work, people have a tendency to plant right on.
Is that your presentation?
Yes.
I think so.
The only thing I would add, there is a very large ash tree that that driveway is coming down, and I guess it's not in good shape, but beyond that, Jay can comment on this, it really affects sightlines. In fact, I'm sorry I don't know her first name, Sarah.
That's me.
Sarah will vouch for the fact that you just, I don't know her last name, you cannot see around that tree.
It impedes your ability to get out of our driveway. So when we have folks over, we do, we say, oh, and before you leave, let me tell you how to get out of our driveway.
There used to be a mirror.
Yes. I've been told there used to be a mirror.
We'll continue in a second.
Can that Sarah Crossman, please?
Albert Chain, A-L-P-E-R.
Have you addressed him?
261.
Just give the board a chance to make some comments, and then we'll open it up to comments from the audience. We really, I'm sure we have some questions and comments to make ourselves. And I...
One point, is the ash tree on public property?
Apparently not.
It's not, it's on the private property.
Does the state shade tree law come into effect with that tree?
No.
Do I have a name, please?
It's on public property. I mean, probably need a name, I guess. Yes, could you just give the board your name, please, and your address?
Jim Colando, 242 Merriam Street. I just didn't know if somebody had determined that or not.
Jay has commented. And this is the only other comment before the board has a chance to...
Dr. Shisey, 254 Merriam Street. My driveway is opposite where the middle part of their new driveway would come, and that is absolutely against the law. Plus the fact that that ash tree is one of the older ash trees in Weston, and I have been having Val Postman come up and check that tree every year, 10 years, to be sure it was nice and healthy. Because at one time, there was a whole line of them along the street, and over the years, people would come right along and just cut them down.
Our consultants, I think it may be a little early to get comments from you guys, because it's really not very much here to work with. I mean, have they provided you any information on things like the drainage design, the septic design, any pieces like that at all?
We've been fairly consistent in directing them to, you know, explore other options, to maybe tighten up the proposal in the back, look at other driveway configurations for a while. I don't know if that's answering your question, but I...
No, that's good, that's helpful.
I think it's, I think what we need to hear is, I need to put it on you, but the board's opinion on it and direction.
Well, one question before then. Is that, was it an accurate statement to say that you guys thought that the center of this... of this rectangle was the, was the best place to locate the new house in the back lot? That, that was the way Jay characterized it?
Just to bring back to that sidewalk, this is the, this is the edge of the tree line, and we were right on the test holes, so that's.
Right on the contour change.
You know what? I, I, let me answer that with a question, with a question, because this is prob, this is, I'm pretty sure how, we've been looking at this one for a while. What house, what type of house, what size house? Could be a great location for a particular house, might not be a great location for another house. Let's define it a little bit more. It seems a little, it seems very kind of wide open. This is more like an A and R as opposed to a flexible.
Exactly.
So if you were to tell me it's a nine hundred square foot studio cottage for the crazy aunt in the back, that's going to be twelve feet high, it's probably a good spot.
Right.
If it's going to be a ten thousand square foot neo-colonial stucco something, probably not.
Well, let, let me just make a couple of comments, personal comments, my personal reaction. The reason for the flexible subdivision bylaw was to let people actually adapt their design to the features of the site, to be more sensitive to the, to the site conditions that prevail on a piece of property. I have a hard time squaring that goal with the geometric exercise that I'm looking at on the site plan. And what I'm wondering is, is there a way to modify this to more closely accomplish the goal that the bylaw is written for? And that keys in directly, at least for me, to what Dave was just saying, and I see Kim nodding her head as well. Now, we have, this has to be, I mean, this is a, Jonathan said it, this is a developed neighborhood with houses close together, they all see each other, this is, they want, this, this wants to be part of the community, not something that landed from outer space with retaining walls and clear cutting of the property and all kinds of major topographical changes. So I think, I personally think this has got a way to go before it accomplishes the goal that the flexible subdivision bylaw is written for. And one other point, the, the, the do require one waiver. And that waiver is for the, is for the cul-de-sac. And we don't have to grant that waiver.
Has it ever been denied in this town?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
It, it, that's irrelevant, this is, we're looking at this site and the conditions on this site. In my opinion, it doesn't matter, whether we did or didn't, I don't think it, it's a relevant comment. And I, for one, would like to see a lot more sensitive approach to this before we can feel comfortable signing off on the, on, on, on the dead-end road issue. That's my, that's, those are my comments.
Al, one, just for some direction, I hear what you're saying, you're looking for a little more, you know, development of what's going to happen there. The trade-off is that these folks aren't going to build, they're going to sell that back lot. Is there some, who's the best person in the planning board for us to? I think we need, it's a little bit of help on how far you want to take it. You know, we're balancing without, we don't want to tie the hand of someone who comes down, looks like he wants to buy the property, but I hear what you're saying. Is there a best person to talk to? I know this lady, I welcome you tonight, but it's probably a little early to start picking on her.
It would be the first time.
I think she may be up for it, I don't know. We'll try to through and get back to you.
Jonathan, if anybody who buys that property, you can't just have, you're not listening actually to what Al said, which was, it has to really be a sensitive.
No, I'm hearing exactly what you're saying.
So it's going to have to be in the decision. And so you can't just have it open-ended, so somebody comes in and says, no, I really do want the turd, the stucco, you know, ten thousand square foot house.
No, I hear what you're saying, and I've seen how you've gotten, for want of a better word, stricter and stricter in that area from your earlier flexibles, and I understand where you're coming from, so.
You've learned a lot of lessons.
I would characterize it as more sensitive.
That's probably a better word.
Sure. There are three things which I would rather see on something of this, of, of, so early, really a very early kind of plan. One is the building, the potential places to, where to build, I didn't want to say building envelope, that brown square, making that significantly smaller and down on the area that's more flat, so you're dealing with a lot less change of the terrain and geography as per our guidelines and specs and the bylaws, right, our standards. So that would be a much smaller area that would be available to be built on. I would, while I understand the red line, you know, is sort of like the area, the limited disturbance and stuff, you were talking about an area inside of that for planting, maybe there should be a green line inside of that to talk to, that referred to more, you know, work that you would be doing as landscape person to add additional plantings and stuff. And the third thing, which has to do with impervious surfaces and also on the neighbor to the south, is it? North, okay. To the left. Looking at that, I said, why build that long driveway? Why not double up with the other driveway and come off the end of that over by the barn? That, to me, makes sense, it's a lot less impervious surface, and you don't put the driveway right behind that person's house. It's a shared driveway.
Right, so you come in and drive between the barn and the house?
Right, we come from there, over, over to it, right. And that, to me, makes a lot more sense, it's much smaller, a lot less impervious surface, and less imposition on, is it, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Are you saying share a driveway with us?
No.
Great, okay, now I'm with you. I'll send that to my driveway.
Those who don't know us, right now, I'd love to see you at this stage, you know, I would assume there's a lot more details.
Okay, Steve, you had a comment you said?
Can you clarify what you mean by the driveway on this side?
Well, instead of bringing a whole new driveway in from Merriam Street, which adds a whole lot more impervious surface, you know, utilize the existing driveway, come off of that in front of the barn to get to the other, so it would be a shared driveway for that period.
Our gravel driveway, or you referring to the Malone driveway?
Referring to this driveway.
That's our gravel driveway.
I would assume so, yeah.
Can I just dribble so?
Well, I'm Lauren Chacon, and I live at, at four five Merriam Street, right there. What's not drawn on there is my driveway, which comes out right next to Mr. Malone's driveway, which then would be then the third driveway, which would turn into the third and fourth driveway, so you would have four driveways within a very concentrated spot.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, share, the shared driveway.
Right, there's two families using one driveway, right. So four, four families worth of cars in a very small spot.
So I don't see how you're going to end up without that anyway, if there's a.
It would be three on the other side.
Okay, I think, before we get, I know people are really anxious to talk, but I just would like to get the rest of the planning board's comments, if there are any, before we open it up, if you don't mind. So Steve, I think you said you had a comment?
Since we're talking about shared driveways, did you look into the possibility, I understand that it's remote, of getting an easement from them alone, so that you could use their driveway to access that house?
The planning board asked us to look into that, and they asked us also to look into another planning board member on whether we could come in through Sarah's driveway. And our neighbors are not very crazy about the idea of sharing their driveways. And I do have, there's a number of.
Better, better, worries, no.
So I did, I did follow up on both of your requests, and I did approach them on that. And then on, on the driveway, the other plan, there are a number of safety issues. Like at first blush, it looks like that might be a possibility, but I do have the solid pictures of why that presents a lot of, of safety issues, because it basically goes at the bottom of our stairs to our kitchen. And you can see also that there's a blind turn there, so that the people that are coming in from that angle, they're coming in and they can't see people headed out this way. And then it also creates, if we were going to park our cars where we do in front of the barn, it's totally blind then, coming that way. And there's sort of, there's at least three different problems that would endanger property, children, dogs. And I have it all shown to you, the blindness of that scenario.
May I just explain something to you? If we don't grant the, the dead-end waiver on, from our rules and regulations, we're not talking about two lots on that site. I just want to make that clear, that you're asking us to grant you a waiver so we can put the second lot in. We don't have to grant the waiver. So I, I can understand why you think a lot of things are bad, and that, and we're glad to listen to you. We want to find a way to make what you want happen that also is satisfactory to your neighbors, and that's our mandate. I just want to make that clear.
But with the preserving of the.
But nothing. The, the message is, we, we find a mutually satisfactory solution to what you want to do, or we don't grant the waiver and you can't build, you can't put the second lot in.
I suggest that the planning board get an opinion, Tom, how.
I, I, I will.
We would like that.
Ally Fernandez, two sixty, Merriam. We live across from Sarah and across from the ash tree, actually. And Jane's comments before about blind spots and children and whatnot, I think that's applicable across that entire span. There are blind spots over where we are, there are minors, dogs, it's the same set of problems for all of us. So I just wanted to add that from the flip side, so it's a real concern for us.
So I think where I was going with the driveway may be appropriate to review a slightly different, maybe the configuration of your gravel driveway is not exactly perfect for making it a dual driveway, okay? Maybe, you know, looking at where's the best place for a driveway to come out, maximize the saving, and where would you want it in relationship to the house that you're saving in the front, which is a good thing, I think everyone probably agrees with that, you know? So that it's not too close to that also, and obviously you don't want to break by your skids. But if you're going to build a driveway like the one on the left, well, maybe, maybe think it serves a lot, what could be built a little farther away from the house that could serve as both properties, minimizing, you know, the cuts in the, you know, minimizing the number of cars that are trying to get out on Merriam Street, but also minimizing the impervious surface and less impact on, you know, the neighbors. Is that a better way, so you, I mean, do you understand what I'm trying to get at with that? I mean, it's a thought, you know?
Yeah, I, well, I'm, Steve and I are new members, so I consulted our rules and regulations, which enumerate the things that we ought to have our standards on. And the standards are to reduce the volume and cut of cut and fill, to reduce the area in which existing vegetation will be disturbed, to reduce the number of mature trees to be removed, and to reduce the number of driveways exiting onto the street. So I'm going to echo what everyone said here, all of these things, limiting site disturbance, limiting the envelope of the house itself, limiting the, possibly limiting, if we can, of one of the exits from the driveway, or sharing a driveway.
Right, so those are the comments from the board. Comments now from the audience. All of a sudden, everyone's very quiet. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Susan Ann Haber, Fifteen Ring Road, and Karen Rubinstein.
Yeah, Susan Ann Haber, Fifteen Ring Road, I live over there. And when you're doing a flexible plan, you probably want to add my house to it and the Newell's house next door, just so we can see what's happening. I'd like to state, from the beginning, that most of the residents in the room recognize the Bybee Myers' right to sub their, subdivide their property, provided that they conform to planning board rules and regulations for subdivision in zoning by law. We'd like to work with the planning board and with the applicants in determining the effect of the proposed subdivision on our properties. And this is particularly important because of the location of the proposed new lot. At the sidewalk in tonight, Jay pointed out that the property was really carved or left over from all the subdivisions that were around it. And what happens then is that the new lot proposed will literally sit, literally sit amidst multiple side and backyards. As Jay said earlier, most of the lots are thirty thousand square feet in size, it's small, so we're all right on top of each other. In order for the planning board to really understand the situation, I respectfully request that you go for a sidewalk, just to see what's happening out in the field. The Bybeys, Myers, were very nice, and they left all those tapes flapping in the wind, and they recognized that only one member could come, so I really urge you to schedule a cycle to come on out. With the exception of the applicant's house and the Chacon house to the right, most of the houses in our neighborhood are small and medium in size. And the houses that will be most affected by the proposed lot are one and a half stories. Construction of a new house, and I know we're not talking about that at this stage, but the reality is constructions of a new house with a development area like that will potentially boom over the other homes, and particularly one will be in the face of Barbara Adlin Malone, not much distance there. So given the conditions described, it's doubly important to propose flexible development to meet the standards outlined in zoning by law section eight H eight, six eight eight, six H eight. And to add to what Roy was saying, some of those standards include protection of natural and historic features of the site, avoiding undue adverse impacts on the neighborhood, and provision of a design that will minimize the size of the developed area, the ground area. This plan, as you all proposed, really falls short of that. And I suspect with some alteration and some rejiggering, you can come up with a plan that's satisfactory to you and also to the neighborhood and the planning board. I'm drawing on my experience in reviewing pretty much every flexible plan in town, except for one. This plan, as proposed, has some deficiencies. And specifically, and it was touched on earlier, the size of the no disturbs area is only the thirty-five foot setback. What that means, the implication of that, is that everything within the red area is subject to earth movement, regrading, pretty much anything, except for construction. The majority of the lot, so, is available for any type of disturbance. One of the suggestions would be to move in that no disturb area. The developed area that's shown on the plan is created for the house and its structures is enormous, and it could support a very large house. The bylaw specifically states, Jonathan, that the developed area shall be of the size to satisfy the stated purposes and standards set forth in the flexible development provision, and I don't think that's happening there. Finally, the applicants, as we've seen, although Karen, you were giving us a little feedback tonight, really haven't proposed any screening that would mitigate the impact of the proposed new lot. So my suggestions at this point, and as the board suggested, they probably will be fleshed out, hopefully will be fleshed out later in the process, is that there's a significant increase in the no disturb buffer, bring that red line in, reduce the size of the developed area, and really consider a lot of landscape screening as a measure. Thank you. I'll turn it over to everyone else.
Anyone, yes?
Hi, Sarah Albertain, two sixty-one. One, there's, there's several things that I want to say. The first is that we just purchased this home January fifteenth. The first is that we just purchased this home January 15th of this year, and we did not know about this plan development prior to purchasing the home. So you can imagine, as a new homeowner in Weston, how surprising it is to be here at a town planning meeting. We, we don't yet have a sofa, but we're in here. So I appreciate a lot of the comments that you all have made about the neighborhood. We chose the house, we chose the town, in large part because it's a nice cluster of homes. The houses are close enough, so you feel like you're amongst the people. They're not on top of you. We just moved here from London. If you want to get on top of each other, move there. It's just enough really nice feeling to the neighborhood. So I want to point out that there are seven direct abutters, but there are also a lot of people, if we put the house on a higher grade, there's a lot of folks who can view it from across the street. So it's not just the folks that are in the, the map that make up the neighborhood. It really is a broader impact than this, I think, seven that are here. So I, I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but my gut is that there aren't often seven direct abutters and then four or five people with direct line of sight. It's a, the impact here feels large to me as a, as a new resident. I am concerned about the driveway. I will say Helen and Jane have been very open to discussion of the driveway, which I appreciate. I have two young children. One is learning to bike. We were hoping she could learn to bike on that driveway. One is learning to walk. So the safety and closeness of that driveway feels very intimate to us, the way it's proposed. I'm delighted to hear you asking questions about how the driveway can be modified to minimize the impact on, on me as a neighbor. I care about the big picture for the neighborhood. I really care about that driveway. That's my, that's my skin in, in the game. So I appreciate the conversation that we've had previously, but I, I hope we can open up the discussion on the driveway in a major way.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Comments? Yes? She's next, then you.
Hi, I'm M. L. Henderson Flynn. I live in 268 Marion Street, which is diagonally across the street. My husband, Tony Flynn, and I live in the home together. I kind of wanted to, just following up a little bit on what Sarah was saying about the Silver Hill neighborhood. You know, we've been in our home for 18 years, and we moved into Weston and bought property in Silver Hill. And when we did so, I think we felt as though we entered into a contract with the town. And there's two sides to that contract. So as homeowners, we agreed to maintain our homes and abide by the rules, which enabled historical plaques to be displayed with great pride on many of our homes. And the town, in turn, agreed to protect and preserve the semi-rural appearance of this neighborhood that we so love. Stonewalls and beautiful trees and vistas and a wooden bridge, a charming wooden bridge, which if the MBTA had their way, would have become a double-decker steel bridge. And the neighborhood, in a really gallant way, band together, I'm looking around the room and seeing all the people who were there, you know, saying we would hug the bridge to preserve that wooden bridge in our neighborhood. 255 Marion Street is a significant home in the Silver Hill area. It has been restored and cared for since it was purchased, and we appreciate that. However, after reviewing the plans, the size and scope of the proposed square of the block is not in keeping with the semi-rural nature of our neighborhood. As it is situated, the size of the footprint would block many beautiful vistas and vantage points and destroy, take down many trees that are enjoyed by so many. For the sake of the neighbors, the abutters, and our collective property values, which will take a significant hit if not done well, I ask the board to consider reducing the size and scale of the plan so that it maintains the semi-rural appearance of our Silver Hill neighborhood, which we all love so, so dearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you have a-
Yes, my name is Joseph Malone, and I live with my stepmother Barbara Adelman. And first of all, we want to, you know, reiterate what was just said. She is opposed to this development. The, the three houses in pink there, the layout has a historical purpose. It's something well-built by the same, the same family. So it's been stated that all this is leftover land. Those houses were all in existence out of 1921, and they left that area there for a purpose, because the daughter that lived in Barbara's house didn't want her father to see her coming and going from her house. So the woods that are in there, it's not just leftover land. And then the, the other thing is the waiver, in your density determination, waivers are not supposed to be substantial. And I think in most towns, granting a cul-de-sac waiver is considered a substantial waiver. So do, I mean, Barbara would be in favor if you enforce it.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other comments tonight? I just, I just want to point out that we're, I think, pretty clearly agreed that we're going to continue this hearing, and we're going to also schedule another sidewalk, as Susan Haber suggested, so that we can all visit the site. Only one of us was able to do so before, but we should all take a look at this site. So I just want to, this is not your only chance for comment. I just want to make that clear to everybody. So having said that, if we could try and just limit it to a couple more comments, because then we have to go to our next hearing. Do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm Jean Broadnax. I'm 15 Pallet Hill, which if you could point that out, thank you. That's my residence, where I've been for 23 years this October. I moved there because of the beauty of the surrounding properties. My property is quite close to, to homes on either side, and my backyard is the beautiful woods that, which the Myers own. You know, and I understand, and I certainly would like to work with them to, you know, build a house that is appropriate. But I really, I have to second and add that I, I think that if it is too big or too tall, that it will destroy the whole face of the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. Yes?
Yes, I have 254 Marion Street. I've lived there for 53 years, 54 actually, very shortly. And I am also the historic conservation chairman by local Dodgers of American Revolution. And it is very important, the streetscrews in a town like Weston, and particularly, the streetscrews remain somewhat the same. Because without that, you know, the whole nature of the whole area changes. And as, as you know, I am opposed to the driveway on the north side, because it does impact my driveway as well as several others. And also that tree. When I moved there, there was a whole archway of trees all summer long as you drove up Marion Street. It was so delightful, because I would be coming from Boston, and as soon as I got on Newton Street, I would be in the tunnel of beautiful, cool trees. And over the years, as people have moved into the houses along the, a lot of those big trees are down. Big ash tree, I had the tree warden checking on. And actually, Nstar and some of the other utility companies are very happy to have that tree there, because before that tree got so big, we had a lot of disruptions, because the wires were wiggling around every time there was wind. Now they've got to pass them to a connector right through the tree. And they're very steady, and our TVs aren't going all over the place. So I am really opposed to the driveway, and I think if there is a development, the house needs to be a great deal smaller.
Okay, thank you. One more comment, and then that's-
Most, Amelia Newell, 9 Brighley Road. I'd like to also request that our house be added to the plan in the back there, the same comment that Susan Haber made about their house. The one other thing I wanted to point out, well, the two other things I wanted to point out are, one, that I think it's really important that, there's a lot of discussion about trying to make sure we adjust to things. And everyone's understanding of what, you know, what is the look and feel of this land? What is the natural whatever, all the words that go into the flex plan language? It involves things that we may not all be talking about, the same thing. So finding a way to make sure that's all articulated before anything gets done that can't be reversed, you know, trees, stone walls, the slope of the land, that all matters. It's what you all are saying. You don't need to hear it twice, but it does need to get done before anything gets knocked down. The other thing I wanted to point out that people may be less aware of is that there have been three storms, one of which was Sandy, everybody remembers that, but there have been three other storms that have knocked down trees in exactly the same alley, and it goes right to where that house is laid out right now. And it kind of cuts from there, crossways through our neighborhood, our house, and then crossways through the Kerns' house. So the other thing that I think should be added to this is that anything gets done with trees in the back half of that lot, it's going to affect the windshield of all of the houses around it. So I think we need to get an arborist in there and get a pretty good opinion just to make sure that we're not, like, landing trees on people's houses.
All right, we're going to have to stop for this evening. We'll continue the hearing to what, what-
Yes, I had one thing, Alan. I think there's some confusion on that big box. I'll call it a big box up at the top.
That's not the house.
That's not the-
Everybody, I think people all understand.
No, that the last, not, they don't, not all. That's the area within which they're saying the house can be built, and we've been asked to shrink that area tonight. But that is by no means the size of the house we're talking. These folks are going to tell us how big a house we can put on this box. So that, that box is just location, that, that's all that serves. That is how we've been told to, to shrink it.
And also, so you minimize the top of the roof.
Yeah.
Break it down.
I think that's better.
Yeah. Okay.
Great, great feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
We do.
We're trying to schedule a continuation of the hearing, we're hearing each other.
If you continue it, you continue it to a date certain.
Yes.
So people need to be aware that if this meeting is continued, you will not get another notice. The board will continue it to a date certain.
We're trying to establish that date right now.
So we're trying to establish that date.
That's why you need to stay quiet for a minute.
So it would, um, yes, so-
Does that give us time for a sidewalk? We want to schedule a sidewalk between, between-
This gives us almost a month, yeah.
Or does it? Yeah. Okay, we can do that. All right, so we'll continue the sidewalk.
June 4th at, um, do you want a date, some kind of date certain? Do you want to say 7:45?
June 4th, 7:45.
Is that a conversation with Steve?
Yes.
Would that be modified by plan?
Uh, yes, sir. We're going to schedule a sidewalk.
Will we hear about that date, the sidewalk?
Yes.
You can come over any time. We have it all set up. There already was a sidewalk.
Yeah, I know.
Keep checking the town website.
We're doing plans as well.
Well, for the sidewalk, because that's not, that's not officially a, a, a public meeting, so just keep-
The savings will be sidewalk.
Sidewalk, you pointed out.
No, no, it makes sense, I definitely.
All right. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Nice to see you. Thanks. You guys have a schedule for a sidewalk? Yeah. No, we don't have it, so let's have a schedule.
No, we don't have anything for that day.
Yes. I don't know.
Yeah, the camera, it's getting on the sides. We have a sidewalk on the 13.
Yes.
All right, let's get this going. I'm going to be late.